So it is 7:00 PM. We are waiting on two members to reach a quorum. We're also waiting for our attorney to arrive before we begin the meeting. So I beg your pardon, but I need to ask you to give us a bit of patience as we collect all the members of the board and all the support staff for our 1221 meeting. Hello, Rachel. Good to see you there.
Hi, sorry, I missed the last meeting.
Okay.
I slept.
I understand that if you're working the schedule that you do, I completely understand that.
Yeah, I next time I told Zach, call me and the phone call will wake me up. The text won't wake me up.
There you go. My daughter, for many years, worked as a a night baker. And so she began her shift at 2:00 AM. So she was basically nocturnal. So I totally understand.
Well, I'm not, I'm an evening sleeper.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get off work at 9:00 AM and I stay awake and then I go to sleep at 5:00 or 6:00 usually. And then I go to work at 11:00 PM.
Okay, so we are going to, yes?
Um, for some reason, Dennis and Rick, it's the Zoom link is taking them to the meeting from last time. So I'm just sending them the new the new link. But you guys got here. Okay. So I don't know why it's
We can, we can wait just a few minutes then. So you sent them the link, the link? Okay, so let's go ahead and get started and we'll wait for them to join us because the first few items don't really require that they be present. So first off, let's start. Thank you for attending the planning board meeting for 122021. We have a full agenda. We have administrative business, administrative business, including the approval of minutes updates from different boards. We have a field change discussion that we need to conduct. And let me ensure that's set. We have public comments and then we have various application reviews, including PB 2117, 62 South Chestnut, Mr. Moore. And then moving forward, we have PB 2118 Prospect Street along PB 2119, 140 Huguenot Street. PB 2120, 107 Main Street. And then we have various public comments to end, and that will be the end of the meeting. So a full agenda. We have everyone here this evening. We do have a quorum now, I assume. With Zach, Rachel, and I were waiting for Dennis. Will that make us a quorum once Dennis arrives?
You're already a quorum with the three of you.
Very good. Okay. So let's get started on some of this. So we have administrative business. Everyone received the minutes for 12721. Were there any comments or edits that need to be made to the minutes of the meeting of 12721?
They look good to me.
Then I would like to ask for a motion to
Oh, wasn't Rachel absent last time?
Correct.
Yeah. So we can't, we can't approve them without Dennis here.
So we're going to wait of those. So let's move past those. Let's go ahead and get some updates. I saw that a woman was here. So can we get some updates on the Village of New Paltz? Board of Trustees, the EPB, anyone here from the Elster County Planning Board?
Well, good evening. Hi, it's Bill. Thanks, everyone, for coming to the meeting on this during this holiday week. Just one thing to note that our last village board meeting that the village board elected to be the lead agency on planning board 211314, the 54 South Manheim project. And that's about it.
Which one was that again, Bill?
The PB 1314, 54 South Manheim.
Wait, you guys consented to us speak to the planning board being the agency, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, did I?
Yeah, you claimed
We're, we're involved, we're an involved agency, but you're the lead.
So let's make certain that we note that you approved the planning board for being the lead agency for that specific item.
That's correct.
Bill, I was wondering if there were any more discussions about the HPC's proposal to expand the downtown historic district?
Not at our last meeting, no.
Okay. Anything from the environmental planning board, Billy? Were you part of that?
I'm not on that board now.
Whom do we need to reach out so that we can get updates for that board?
I, I, I went to the meeting.
Okay, Rachel, why don't you fill us in?
Sure. Um, well, Ted said that he finished his report on the water and sewer capacity and that it was available on the website. So I haven't, I haven't had a chance to look at it myself, but it's there. Um, and we discussed a few other things. Nothing I can think of that directly relates to the planning board.
Rachel, would you mind reviewing that wastewater capacity summary that, report rather?
Yes, I also look at it. I should look at it.
Yeah, could you provide us a could you provide for us a summary of their findings on that?
Sure.
That way we can have it before we move into some of the applications which you're going to need that, that information. So that we can have a record of that. All right. So next item that we're going to move to are the, is a, an interesting item. But before we get to that, I just want to take a moment to, to recognize that Alana will be moving on from her position to another position, and it's a definite career advancement for her, and we're all happy for her. However, she has been the backbone of our meetings so many times and for the communication that goes on prior to the meeting. So I want to recognize the, the contribution that she's made to the Village of New Paltz, to the planning board and to the organization of our planning board as well as others. I personally wish her the best, the best, and I believe it is a gain for the group she will be joining, and it's certainly a loss for us, and then I hope all well for her.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, Alana. Your professionalism and optimism and everything else is, has been just a real charm to, to be associated with. And I know from my point of view, you have made my job so much easier, the way that you carry on your job in, in a way that is very, very special. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, guys. I really appreciate it. I'll be, I'll be in touch. You can text me if you need me. We're really grateful.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't say that.
I know. Well, I'm anticipating them anyway. So I'm just like, it's fine. Just text me.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the, the, the next item. And again, thank you, Alana. We have a field change notice regarding Zero Place from Cory, and I'm going to read what he wrote. He says, I have a field change request from Zero Place. It involves them not being able to provide the 77 parking spaces that were approved. Only 52 are required by code. This all happened because Central Hudson placed some infrastructure on the site that caused other things to move. Through cause and effect, there is now no space in the northwest portion of the lot to facilitate this last spot. The engineers have proposed a new layout for that area. See attached, and he did attach some information for us. That at least gets them 76 spaces. They were wondering if I can approve this as a field change as it was unforeseen. And due to an issue that Central Hudson created that they, Zero Place, could not change. This one seems straightforward as their engineer has worked through many proposals to get, to still get as close as possible to the correct number of parking spaces. I did perform a site plan compliance inspection of everything else, and 95% of the items were completed. They have a list of a few deficiencies that they will need to correct to receive a pass inspection. So what he is doing is asking us for the the permission to do a, a field change as opposed to having them come back and do a, a site plan change as it is involving just, what is it, from 77, 76? 70, 76 parking spaces that they have available. They wanted to provide 77 parking spaces and only 52 are required by the building code. So he is asking for the permission to do a field change, allowing them only 76 parking spaces versus the 77. Is there any comments that people would like to, to make on that? No?
John?
That's right.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Rachel.
No, I just, that, that spot right there, that's, that's, they just tore the bridge down that was right there. That's, that's the spot we're talking about. Yeah, I wish they hadn't done that.
Other than that, I don't They were required to keep it or not from the
No, I, they, it came, it happened right before I joined the planning board and I asked about it and I was told that that train had left the station before.
I think it was decided years, a couple of years before. I think what we could probably do, and David does seem very amiable, is I think we could probably ask him as a just, just to give us an idea of what he wants to do to make a connection. There is a connection to the, the rail trail that is much closer to the building and the street, a little bit farther down.
It's in the middle.
Well, actually, they, they, they built a fairly nice pave, not paved particularly, I think it is crushed gravel. Which would allow people to come off the rail trail to, to the, the restaurants. So I don't think we are losing things per se. Just that, that, that wooden bridge.
Hey, John, John, it's Dennis. I recall back when, when that was being discussed originally, that bridge was owned by the village.
Ah, okay.
And in fact, there were some issues at the time that they had to be careful because if someone crossed the bridge or was fooling around on the bridge and got hurt, the village could be liable.
Well, that, that makes sense. Um, I think it's a good thing to, to, to look at in terms of the access to the rail trail. But we're not looking at that right now. What we are looking at are the number of parking spaces that were available. And Rick, I believe you wanted to weigh in on that. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be an unusual request for a field change. And field changes are really designed to address small scope issues, changes that happen to be made in the field. Typically, like a curb has to be put in a slightly different spot or a pipe has to be realigned from what it was originally done. That's typically your field changes. The, to eliminate a parking spot is not typically a field change at all. Because even though the minimum required in the code, that wasn't the basis for the planning board's site plan approval. There was lots of issues that came into play as to how many spaces there needed to be based upon a number of people and the facilities, the restaurants and everything else. So, and it's also as to whether or not restaurants could change. So there's lots of things that went in there to determine the, the 77 number. And so it was much more than just, well, what's the minimum and we'll provide X number above that. Typically, this is a site plan amendment because it deals with an issue of parking. So if they had one versus they wanted to eliminate seven. It's still a parking issue, which is usually not relegated to field change. However, it's, it's your decision to determine field changes however you want. And this certainly is, given everything, rather de minimis as far as the elimination of one parking space. And also, it's not usually part of the equation as to, well, they were forced to do this by somebody else. That may be a good reason why to give or not give a site plan amendment, but it's really doesn't define. For instance, I don't, I don't want it to be considered that if somebody's forced into something that involves a much bigger aspect that they say, well, is a field change because I was forced into it. It wasn't my choice. That's really irrelevant to the determination of whether or not it's a field change. So this would be an unusual field change. But you have a board to determine that you believe that it can fall into that category. It's not a well-defined category. And so you're allowed to vote on it, but I just wanted to sort of give you some caution so that this is seen as a unique situation and not one setting a precedent for, for other similar changes to parking issues.
Well, the, the precedent aspect was something that I was going to ask about. Does this set a precedent, however, with it being with us having very specific and narrowly defined exclusions or, or, or reasons only being one parking space and, and it being created by, by virtue of, of Central Hudson and outside agency? Could we?
Well, like I said, I, I don't think the fact that it was caused by Central Hudson would define whether or not it should be a field change because there may be things that Central Hudson requires that have a large consequence. And so you wouldn't want to have a, a policy where you would consider that as part of the equation as whether or not it's a field change. Here, I think what you should concentrate on is that it's a single parking space in a site plan amendment that although included other issues clearly is well above the minimum required into the code. So it's not like you're going ahead and changing the code requirements for this. You're simply modifying through a field change the resolution conditions that you need 77 parking spaces. But I think it's, it's fairly narrow. As with any precedent, it's always cabinbed to the particular circumstance of that waiver. And here you have some particular and unique circumstances. So I wouldn't be too concerned about a big precedent, but I just wanted to go ahead and raise those general issues of site plan changes versus field change. And this is an unusual one, but you're allowed to go ahead and define your field changes as you wish.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any discussion from the board? Anybody want to weigh in on this? Zach, you look like you're about ready to do it.
Yeah, and well, I, I think it's hard for me to you know, determine how important this one parking spot is without knowing the, you know, the reasons they wanted to have that 77 number in the first place and seeing the the original approval. So I guess I'm leaning towards asking them to submit a site plan amendment. And so I can look at the, the reasoning behind that.
But that's fair. Rachel, anything from you?
I, I just, it doesn't seem like a big deal to me. It's just, it's one parking spot. I mean, I looked at where it was on the plan and it I, I, all I could think of was, gee, that's where the bridge was. It's just one, one space. I don't know. Is it going to be, uh, uh, is that like a big onus to ask for? Or I mean, is it a big deal to ask them to amend the site plan or, I mean?
And it's just, it's a little bit of a delay and it's a little bit of a cost to come in. It certainly isn't a big deal. They would simply come in with their prior plan approval and it could be as simple as drawing a big X over the one parking spot to have you, and then you would accept that as an amended site plan.
Would that, would it stop them from operating business as usual or whatever? Is it going to delay their getting their C of O? Or is it going to slow them down? Is it that likely?
Yeah, I can't tell you for sure. I don't know where they are in their progress and how close they are. It sounds like they have some other things that they have to straighten out with Cory before that. This could, in my mind, if you wanted to go ahead and do it, I believe there's a public hearing requirement even for site plan amendments. I think if you wanted to set it down, you could set it down with the public hearing. So it would only still take one meeting. But the, the one issue that kind of sides with Zach is that to date, you have never considered elimination of parking, any parking, as a field change. And I think that that's, you know, again, you have discretion, but I think that's probably a good thing. I think parking spaces are not typically what a field change is to eliminate approved parking spaces.
Yeah, and I will also say, looking at these, these rough plans they gave there, they are changing some of the landscaping too, and it looks like eliminating one of the trees from the parking lot. So I, I just think, you know, that we should take that into consideration also.
Now, now you've got my interest. Look at it, because did they, I, did they, when did they cut, they haven't cut the trees down yet?
No. No, eliminating one of the proposed trees that was in their landscape plan.
Because I, I think I've been by there.
Dennis, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any big deal. This applicant has gone through a long process. I don't see where one parking place could really make any kind of difference at all. And to hold him up for, for something like this, I don't think is, is reasonable. So I'm, I'm all for just letting him go ahead. I did read the letter. I understand it was something that David wasn't aware of. Central Hudson came along with this. So again, I don't see causing any more. I watch this project daily. He's run into a lot of delays because of the length of time it took to get the original approval. So throwing another, and he did get a very good commendation from Albany for his design and for the net zero. So I really think it would be in our best interest just to say it's not a big deal, as Rachel said, and let, let, let him proceed, proceed the way he wants.
Okay.
Well, I didn't notice the tree. But I think that if, can we make it conditional on his planting more trees? Play or planting the trees he was going to plant elsewhere. Also, what did, what did Central Hudson do? I, I don't understand exactly what they did to make him lose a parking space.
Well, here, so here's what I'd like for, for you to do, Rachel, is to take a look at the plans that came over and you'll see that there's a change by Central Hudson in the positioning of some of their infrastructures that, that moved from point A to point B. What, what I would like to do is, and Alana, if you can make these notes and make sure they get passed along, is for now, I would like to hold off personally on a decision. I want to hear a bit more information from, from David or his site manager, his contract manager who's, who's performing the, the work. And Rick, I'd want to get with you to make sure that we aren't creating a precedent which would allow people to miss well, to, to not file site plan changes on something that may be more significant than this. And not to get us into any, any sort of trouble that, that we would face in the future.
I can tell you, John, I can tell you now, and, and I think to, to delay that actually will delay it much more than simply bringing it on for a site plan at your next planning board meeting and having the public hearing set for that meeting, and it could all be done in, in one. It would be especially it would be in a special part, departure from field changes to do things along the lines that Rachel was talking about, but you know, conditioning it on this, that, or the other thing, you know, it's very much getting now to site plan issues rather than, you know, the, the curb ran into a boulder that can't be moved. So we have to move the, the curb a few inches or that, you know, we have to snake around a, a pipe to the left side of the hydrant rather than the right side of the hydrant. Those are the typical kind of field changes. Usually it's not parking spaces because there are other issues that go into play. And if you're going to condition it with landscape changes and things, it, it really is getting in my mind very close to, if not already, to a site plan amendment. You can do this very efficiently. I, I know it's, it's not as efficiently as saying, go ahead and do it. But it is efficient if you can do it all in one meeting, and that meeting could be your first meeting in January.
Okay, so why don't we approach this? So, so you're suggesting that we do a public hearing in, at the first meeting in January on this? Are you recommending that we make a, allow a site plan change, a field change, or that we require a, a site plan amendment?
Personally, I think it's much more appropriate to be a site plan amendment as simple as it is. And I have seen many site plan amendments in many other municipalities that are as small or smaller than this. But it's the planning boards wanting to maintain that discipline of, if you're going to modify the plan other than these, you know, smaller, minor kind of field change issues, then you come in and ask us and we'll ask you questions about it and see if there's other impacts that would happen as a result of that. I don't think this is going to present any big problems, as Dennis said. I think it's, it's likely that you're going to go ahead and approve it once you, you get that. I think the only, and I don't think it's going to delay him other than, more than the other issues that he has.
Okay.
And I think
There's just one issue with setting a public hearing for the fourth is that they would have to get everything out by the end of this week and it's Christmas. And I can't imagine I don't know how that's, if that's, no, I don't think anyone is here to tell us that they want to do that or how they were going to do that. So like, that's, that's my one thing.
Yeah, that would be your second meeting then. I, I would be very surprised if Cory was going to be issuing a certificate of occupancy by the second meeting.
Okay, so let's let's have them come before the board on, on the 18th. We're set a public hearing for the 18th. Have them make a site plan amendment for the 18th. And I will, I'll, I'll consult with Cory and speak to him a bit about it. And then hopefully we can, between the discussion about the site plan amendment and the public hearing, get them, them set and on their way.
And again, the, the site plan itself that they want to submit, that, you know, You know, you've you've submitted some pretty informal applications from time to time.
Yes.
And certainly, this is a fully engineered site plan. And I think if all he did was take a red marker and put an X over the the parking spot and any changes in the landscaping. That could be done as a markup on the already engineered plan. You wouldn't need an engineer to go ahead and and draft that.
Okay, so Alana, make sure he understands that this would be a markup, that they wouldn't need an engineer to amend the plans or to create a new plan. Would you do that, please?
Yeah. Do they need to submit like a full application and like the fees and everything? Their their escrow account is still open.
The fees, the fees are up up to the building department. If the building department takes the fees or gives half or gives those others, sometimes you you do things that you're permitted to do. That that's up to the building department. The planning board doesn't really weigh in on that.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna do. Kinda ends that discussion. So we'll reach out to Corey and make sure that everything is 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 done and ready.
I will tell you, Alana, so you can also pass this along.
Yeah.
I mean, unless this turns out to be much different than what's being represented, I won't charge any fees with respect to this application on.
Okay, John, does John, uh, do you guys have to request a motion to set a public hearing for the eighteen?
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna like to. Ask for. Move over and see what's January. We're talking about, we're talking about the eleventh, the eighteenth, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I want a motion to set a public hearing for zero place for. January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. A second, please.
Second.
Very good. The motions, all in favor? Motion carries. We'll have a public hearing on the eighteenth for zero place regarding their. Site plan amendment. Next is public comments. Alana, do you see any public comments that are here that are open?
I don't believe so. Not seeing anybody, unless anyone has anything to say now.
So let's make a note that we're gonna keep the public comments open until the end of the meeting. So that anyone who wants to make a public comment can do that. So now we're gonna move on to application reviews. I wanna read a note from Corey. All of us received a memo from Corey today. He says, see attached for my memo regarding specific mentions. In the BMGN memo to the planning board. I don't have enough time to perform a quality zoning code review of all the projects right now. However, the planning board should still discuss and raise any further questions they may have. Says, I've looked at everything. I don't think that there's anything will present any large zoning conflicts. Says, I will make sure they are complete before our next meeting so that we do have time to review. So Corey is not gonna be present here for some of these. But we will, we will, we'll push through them and we'll discuss them as as they come up. So the first item is PB twenty-one seventeen sixty-two South Chestnut. Mr. Moore, are you here?
I am here.
Very good. This is set for a attorney review. It's a returning application. For the construction of a garage studio space in the backyard of an existing residential residence. Some questions that needed to be answered posed to the building inspection inspector. And they have met. Corey intends to provide his comments and writing, and we do have those. Public hearing will still need to be set. Application for a site approval to replace a pre-existing non-compliance hundred ninety-seven. Square foot, one car garage with a new twelve hundred square foot, two-car garage. Behind an existing residence. The applicant also proposes to place the existing asphalt driveway. With gravel to reduce lot coverage. Subject property consists of approximately point two three acres on South Chestnut Street. We have already classified this as a type two action. The property is located but is exempt to referral under the agreement with Elster County Planning Board. Provided following increase in parking is not required, which it does not seem that it does. Channelized access to Sutter County roadway exists or is proposed. There's not a disturbance of one or more acres of land and no new structure located in one hundred year floodplain. So we're going to ask for an update here regarding the issues that were raised at the last meeting, and I have them down here below, and I'll I'll go through them. And then we'll want to set a public hearing. So, Mr. Moore, the first issue was any approval will be. Conditioned on the garage having a plumbing and no water or sewer connections to ensure that the garage will not later be illegally used. As habitable space. And I have, let's see, a note from Corey on that. Take one to find it. Go ahead and if you would, please.
John, I I submitted a point-by-point explanation of the issues that were raised at the last. Planning board meeting. I'm not going to have plumbing plumbing or wastewater drainage. And my, the first time I filled out a short EAF part one. So I I that was an error.
One moment here. Corey. Okay. Corey wrote that legality of the garage use for a workspace. Spoke with the applicant, and he confirms that this is only for personal use, explained, and this should be reiterated by the board. That if he decides to use the building for any other reason, that a separate approval must be sought. Rick, anything you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, I think it's fine. I understand what what Corey was saying, and the way that you typically handle that is that we will put a. Condition in the resolution indicating that the approval with respect to the garage is that. It is allowed to be used for something similar to the sculpture work space. But it can't be expanded into other uses unless they get approval from Corey or from the planning board.
Anyone else on the board have any comments on that? Okay, so we'll make sure that we've we've got that as a condition of approval. Next item is. Density control schedule in the site plan sets forth the required bulk dimensions, but should also have a column that says for. Proposed bulk dimensions. A revised plan has not been submitted submitted and should reflect this information. Were you able to submit that that information?
Well, in in the memo that I sent to Alana, the dimension of the proposed structure is as follows. Footprint twenty-four by fifty feet, height at the eaves ten feet, height at the peak fourteen feet. It's a four twelve pitch.
Okay, that that's fine, but have you submitted that to them?
No.
I I sent the, so I have to, my sending this note to Alana, it does not constitute a valid submission?
No.
So what I put in writing in an email doesn't.
To her, no, but it has to to go to our building inspector and to the attorney because they have to to approve of it.
Your submission, you know, mattered because it then got the situation resolved. But the issue is that at the end of the day, this board is approving a site plan. You've submitted a site plan. It now has to be revised in a couple of different ways, one of which is that you need to add the bulk table. So that has to be added to along the issues that we're talking about here. It has to be revised bulk table. We talked about it at the last planning board meeting. That has to be added to or revised, cuz you did have sort of a bulk table in there, but it has to be revised. As to proposed and existing and also these other issues. So, you know, you have to do that. You you got my notes from last time, I believe. I had told Alana to send them to you. So you know what they are. You have to simply amend the plan as we've talked about. At the end of this, there's a couple of smaller ones like this. And I believe that they can all be addressed by a revised site plan, as well as some of these conditions we're talking about. And I will actually suggest to the board that they may want me to prepare for the next meeting. A resolution in which I'll put some of these as conditions, such as, yes, do the bulk table. By the time you have it, he may have already satisfied that condition, but you'd still keep it in there, and it's simply it's a satisfied.
So that, I've never done this before, clearly. So you need a table that is submitted to Corey. That will be, do you want it on the site plan, the physically on the site plan, the 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 list of these requirements?
Yes. You have, you have a bulk table, what they call bulk table, that little section that says, well, this is what's required. And this is what you have. So. You just have to expand that as to this is what the code requires.
Right.
And this is what you propose, so that it would outline what differences there are and how and the planning board then addresses them. So that has to be on the plan.
It has to be on the plan. Do I have, do I have to have the surveyor approve it again?
Yeah, the surveyor will, the surveyor should understand that kind of bulk table, and if your surveyor has a problem with what needs to be done. He can contact me, and I'll clarify.
Yeah, place the responsibility on to the surveyor to get that done.
Well, this affair is gonna charge me more, too.
True, but it may be money well spent.
It's less expensive than coming back to the planning board each time.
Yes, 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 okay.
And we're trying to help you here.
Okay.
We we, our job in this case is to help you get to yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we just need to make sure that all of the. Is are dotted and the Ts are crossed. So moving on then, the. Board should confirm the location of the proposed accessory structure complies with requirements in code. Specifically, the proposed garage can't be closer than the principal building. Then twelve feet or a distance equal to the height of the accessory building, whichever is greater. Goes on to explain some of these. Says, the applicant indicated in an email that the height of the proposed garage is fourteen feet. The distance from the side lots is currently twelve point five feet. And will be changed to fourteen point five feet to comply, and there's adequate distance from the porch. The principal structure, the revised plan should be submitted with this information. Is that 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 fairly clear?
Yeah, you have to, again, that has to be on the plans.
Okay.
And then. Let's see, what did Corey weigh in?
Sorry, about that point, I I was still a little unclear, so. I don't see it on the plan. What is the distance from the porch of the existing house to the the nearest edge of the garage?
I think it is on there now.
Oh.
I didn't see it at first, but.
The the edge of the garage to the back porch is twenty-four feet.
My recollection is that it says that. Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
No, I'm just reading from the the note that I sent to Alana in in response to the concerns.
All right, my recollection is that that dimension, not the other one of fourteen point five, but the twenty-four I thought was on there, but if not, then you need to put it on.
Well, I I see a twenty-four foot marked as the the width of the actual garage, but I don't see it labeled as the distance, so.
No, no, I I subsequently measured it's twenty-four feet.
Yeah, that's the on the plan.
Yeah, got it.
Okay. And. Let's see. Talks about the plan in a case, the asphalt driver driveway will be replaced with a permeable surface. And the applicant's cover letter states it will be replaced with gravel. However, gravel is considered impervious. Due to impervious surfaces follows, and it gives a definition. And so looking at the note from Corey, it says. I spoke with the applicant about the materials to be used. It's gravel, large stone, not compacted, as stated by the applicant. I'm comparing this with DPW experts as acceptable pervious material, no issues. So that one's been cured.
Well, there will be a condition to that effect. We'll put in a condition that they'll be using. A large gravel stone that will be not, that will not be compacted, so that'll be a condition of the resolution. But nothing needs to be said. Actually, you know what, the proper way to do it, I mean, I'll have a condition here, but tell your surveyor. You should simply put a note on the plan from a line from the driveway. To that effect that says that large gravel stone will be utilized. And will be not compacted. Or something to that effect.
Yes.
That way, make it easier for Corey to see, or some future building inspector to see what's on the drawings. Because usually they don't go as quickly to the resolution as they do to the approved drawings.
So, Mr. Moore, are you clear on on what we need on the plan?
Yeah, all of these issues have to be on the plan by way of note number. And lines that designate the distances.
Also on the bulk table, remember that.
Right, and the gravel.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so do you think that you can have those all prepared and ready for us at the meeting on the. Well, I guess we do it next meeting, but really, we need to have the meeting set for the eighteenth, given that we have to send out notices by Christmas Day.
Yeah, I'll make sure it's done.
Okay, so I'd like to get a motion to set a public hearing on the. Eighteenth of January for this application.
So motion.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so we've got that set. You're gonna have that information for us. I believe we're gonna have our attorney draft a. Resolution for us. Do we need a motion on that?
Usually you do, but you don't have.
So, well, let's let's get a like a motion to draft a a resolution. Of approval. Depending, of course, on the inclusion of all of these, these items for. Here, make sure I say it correctly. For the application PB twenty-one seventeen sixty-two South Chestnut.
So motion.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
The final, Mr. Chairman, the final thing was that I believe in Corey's memo of today. That he indicated that he would perform more detailed zoning analysis for this application as well. So I think that the applicant should be in contact with Alana or or actually Corey. But so Alana, tomorrow's your last day, right?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so he should be in contact with Corey to see if there's anything from Corey's opinion that needs to be addressed at the planning board meeting. And I'm sure Corey will advise us if there is, but that way the applicant will know and maybe can put something on his plans. Or be prepared to to get it ready so that it doesn't push it over for another meeting.
Right, so I will, I'll I'll speak to Corey and then go to the surveyor with whatever Corey wants in addition to what's been expressed here.
Good idea.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Moore. I know it's a lot of detail that seems meaningless, but in the larger scheme of things is important.
It is what it is.
It is what it is. I like that. All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Moore, and we'll look forward to seeing you at the next. All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Moore, and we'll look forward to seeing at the next meeting. Yes?
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. So next, we're going to be moving on to PB 211816 Prospect Street. The long, there's no attorney review on this. Uh, this is a new application for a site plan approval for the conversion of an existing. Two-story barn with first floor garage. Second floor storage to first floor garage. Second floor artist yoga studio for personal use. Um, public hearing is going to be required. Uh, we're gonna have to type this as a seeker action. Um, so there, there we go. So what we want to do. Is we want to uh have the applicants first off. Come up and tell us a little bit about what they are looking to do. So please, Mr. and Mrs. Long, if you would, please come forward and tell us what you're looking to do.
Hi, yes, thank you. It's nice to meet you and thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Carrie. This is my husband Brent. My family and I moved here a year ago, and by family, we have two kids who are five and seven. Uh, my husband, this is sort of a coming home for him because he grew up in New Paltz. So we're excited to own a house now on Prospect Street. And uh, the purpose of our, of our application and coming before the board. Is we are looking to improve the existing barn that is behind our house. It's in a deteriorating state, and we would like to improve the structure. Bring it up to code and make it into a usable garage, a workout space for my hu- husband and I. And a play area for our kids. And so in doing this, we will be maintaining the existing footprint. And it's also important to us that along the way we improve it with a mind towards sustainability. So, um, that being said, I'd like to introduce our architect, Justin Blaheer. He can bring up schematics and we can all answer questions.
Yeah, and if, and if I look familiar, it's because I was the Times Herald Record Newspaper Boy of the Month in October of 1995. So I, I get that a lot around town, but yeah, I grew up on Plains Road and uh, yeah, it's great to be back. And my sister is Noel McIntee. I think ma- maybe some of you know she used to be on the uh planning board as well.
Very good, thank you. So, um, Mr. Bigler, if you would please uh give us a bit of uh input on, on to what's going on here.
Yes, hi, um, nice to meet everybody. Um, so I, I assume you guys all have the printed drawings. I'm not sure. Do you uh have me share my screen to share drawings or how?
Please share your screen if you would.
Okay. So does that work? Do you guys see the drawings here?
We do. Can you increase the size a bit, please?
Yes, that's full screen for me. Let me, let me, I'm not sure. I can do more than that. Of course, zoom in. Um, let me know if that works.
Yeah, that works better if you zoom in.
All right. Um, yeah, so we have, um, this is, this is the site plan. Everything is, is existing except for in this area here, we have the uh e- existing garage. We propose to have a deck, open wood deck from the second floor, which would provide also parking area. We would do that in a permeable paving solution um to not increase the impermeable uh impervious surface. Um, we have some drawings here of the plans on the left of the screen you'll see existing and on the right proposed. Uh, going up from the ground floor, second floor and roof plan. The idea is on, uh, let's see if this works, on the garage, we would have. Basically, keep it as a garage, um, take what is the sort of storage shed. Make that into an entry with a stairwell to the second floor here. Upstairs, add a toilet and a sink and otherwise basically be an open studio. Where the stairs come up to this landing. And as you can see in the roof plan, have a uh a dormer, cut in a dormer to bring in some more light into the studio. In elevation, um, the. The, uh, give me a second here, it's um existing. Yeah, so the idea is the. Um, the dash lines that you see here, so represent the uh proposed outline of the project. The idea would be that we would insulate the roof by, you know, uh rigid insulation or some insulation system on top of these. Existing structure. This is an outline of the deck to the left. And the, you know, how we would grow the roof for the stairwell on the right, if you're looking at the front elevation.
Okay, um, any questions from members of the board? None?
Uh, well, I, I was wondering if the drawings were in the, in the folder. I didn't see them in the Google Drive when I was. Looking over the application.
It should be.
Lana, can you check that real quickly, please?
Yeah.
I, I had them in uh my packet.
Okay, okay. Must miss them.
So, um, Corey says he's unable to provide zoning compliance review in time for uh tonight's meeting, but he's gonna get to that and make sure that we have it. So. I guess what we need to do first is we need to uh go ahead and type uh this as a secret. This is a pretty simple project. Um, this looks to be a type two action. Uh, so we're gonna type it as a type two action, and then the property does not appear to be located within 500 feet of a referral trigger. Uh, so it is exempt from referral under the agreement with the Elster County Planning Board as a seeker type two. Uh, and you filed all of your forms, is that correct? You've uh. Did everything necessary there?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, Corey's still in the process reviewing, so really what we need to do is. We're gonna have to kind of wait for Corey to get back with us on any compliance issues. Anybody have any questions on this? I mean, this is a very basic. Uh, application, there isn't really anything that's terribly sophisticated on this, and I don't see that there's. Anything, it meets all of the uh setbacks, um, doesn't require referral.
I was, I was confused about that actually, because it looked like this garage was kind of a. Pre-existing non-conforming structure. It's right on the property line, right?
Right.
So does the, the addition. Um, addition of the parking space and. Um, roof overhang, does that change anything?
Well, we are, we're trying to make that permeable, and, and that's really just a deck that we're building off the top, so it's, it'll be a spot where we can. Um, we, first of all, we only have one vehicle right now, so uh it would only be, I guess, occasionally if someone came to visit us, um, that we would have. The, the option for someone to park underneath that deck. Uh, but yeah, I don't, I, but that's gonna be permeable, so we were really trying to avoid the additional. Any uh sort of asphalt that goes on the property.
I, you know, I, I don't think that it really changes, um. Anything? Because it was a pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, I don't think there's really a change of use.
It's actually just. Isn't it just a renovation of an existing building?
Yeah, pretty much. Pretty much what I, I, I got out of it, but we're gonna need Corey to, to weigh in on that.
I mean, the, the footprint is changing slightly. They, they are adding uh some. Some new parking and, and permeable paving, so. I, yeah, I'm just, uh, I'm not entirely sure what that means for the, the setback, um, you know. I don't know how the, the neighbors will, it is like some additional construction right at the property line.
Well, I think the issue would be more of a change of use than anything else, but I don't think it would actually change of use.
Okay.
So we just have to wait for, we have to wait for Corey to, to finish up.
So why don't we do this, um? Let's set a public hearing for the 18th. That gives Corey sufficient time to weigh in on this. Um, Alana, did you get the questions that, that, that were uh asked, that Zach asked there? Did you do?
Yeah, I did, and I also just wanted to confirm that uh Justin actually only gave me physical copies. Of uh these maps. He actually never sent me a PDF, so Justin, if you want to just send me this PDF real quick right now, I can just forward it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And then the uh onus will be on Corey to, so we'll have to follow up on, on, on Corey here, so um. All right, so we're gonna follow up with Corey. Uh, let me put this down here.
Hey, awesome.
And Alana, if you can send those over to me tonight, I'll, I'll send an uh email out to Corey to follow up with us on that.
Yeah, sure.
So then we um really can't do anything beyond this until we get this, that it has been typed as a type two action. Uh, we've noted that it does not need to be referred to the Elster County Planning Board. Next thing we're going to do is we're going to set a public hearing, so I need a motion to set the public hearing. For January 18th meeting.
So motion.
Second, please?
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So what we are going to then talk to Corey about, Zach, is um. The. Footprint change. Um, do uh, does.
So when, when, can you clarify when you say the footprint changes, is the, is the footprint by, by meaning the parking spot? Is that the footprint that you're, okay?
And the, the deck, the.
Yeah, the deck too.
Got it.
Excuse me while I make some notes here.
John, I, I know this isn't an attorney um review, but typically when you have a pre-existing non-conforming use. It usually can't be expanded, and that's either higher or further out. Um, or adding something to it that extends it. Um, but that will be up to Corey as to whether or not he thinks adding that deck is an adjustment to a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Okay.
And the, and the theory of that is that. Here, the pre-existing non-conformity, from what I understand people talking about, is the proximity to the. Um, side yard or rear yard, I'm not sure which one, but one of the yards.
Right.
And so by adding, adding a deck along that same plane. You're really extending the, the non-conformity. But again, that's, that'll be up to Corey.
Okay, I've made those notes. I'll follow up with Corey on this tonight or early tomorrow. Um, on that. So the deck um and the. Driveway may change the footprint. Um, and as a pre-existing non-conforming use, can we add or adjust? Uh, the footprint by deck or floors, and so do we need to request a new site plan? Uh, does it extend the non-conformity?
Many times the driveway wouldn't extend the non-conformity because it's subject to different rules. I'm not, I haven't looked at it, so I wouldn't know for this, but usually a deck that follows the same plane. As an existing non-conformity would be an enlargement of that non-conformity.
Okay. Okay, all right. So those are the notes that we have, so. And you can, you can release the screen now, if you would please. Um, so that kind of releases, uh, that kind of um sets the tone, then we're gonna need to talk with our building inspector tomorrow. Uh, need to give him the details of this information. We're gonna need to get a decision by him. You do have a. You do have a uh public hearing that is set. So once he weighs in, then we'll, we'll, we'll know which direction we're gonna move and, and how to advise you. So that we can, we can help you. Get to the, 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 the point of, of, of having this become a reality. And it may require some adjustment, it may not, but that's for the, the, the building inspector to, to decide.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. I hope it's clear enough. Mr. Obliger, do you understand as well?
Yeah, no, sounds good to me. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we will uh speak with him. I will speak with him tomorrow, and then um he will be getting back with you. So that we can. Um, so we can move you along in the process, okay?
Great.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you, you being here.
Yep, happy holidays.
So the next item before us. Is PB 2119 uh 140 Huguenot Street. Uh, new application for a site plan approval for the installation hot tub. Um. Public hearing will be required. Application was not reviewed for zoning compliance or legal issues not identified. Um, application for site plan to install a seven by seven hot tub on an existing patio located behind a garage. So we do look at um it being a, a type two action, um, let's see.
It's exempt from GMO.
Right, I, I was just reading that. Um, don't know that Corey's really looked at the application. Let me see what he has to say. Says, I'll be not, I'm not, I will not be able to provide a zoning compliance review in time for tonight's meeting. An initial look at this application and conversation with the applicant, there appears to be no major zoning issue. With this, planning board should still review project and raise questions as appropriate, that I can answer in my future review. So, um. All right, so I guess we need to uh have the applicant step up and, and uh let's um, let's, let's hear from you what you're trying to do.
Hello?
No, it's already.
Can you hear us?
Hi, we, we moved um here in the summer, but um, and we, and we took in Tom's parents as well, so it's. A multi-generational household, and his mom had this idea to. Install a hot tub in the back mainly for her arthritis and as a, I was kind of like a relief, um. As well, for me as well, so it's kind of like, we looked at it as therapeutic. Um, so we thought a good spot was actually. In behind the garage, um, and there's, there is a patio, um, but then there's kind of like. It wouldn't be on, on the patio, it would be like kind of really, really very close to the garage wall. And there was a window there and um it would require a 220 voltage. Installation, like 220 volt plug, I guess it, it runs on, you know, um, so. That's something that has to, has to get done in, I guess, inside the garage, um. Uh, which would also be great, because I have a plug-in hybrid car, so that would be really great. That's what I need to do with the hot tub, hey? So, um, and it's about like six, six feet eight inch. That doesn't really do with the hot tub, so, and it's about like six, six feet eight inches by like seven foot two inches, something like that. So that's why I just said seven by seven. And when we brought it up to the preservation committee, they said we might want to also include some kind of privacy screen, which we hadn't thought of because it is kind of already was already there existing some kind of like, I guess, garden structure that was like wooden, so it kind of seemed like a little private from the house to the right of us.
I think they gave us the option to do it if we like without reapply.
Yeah, they just said, they just put it in there like, so I wanted to add that into, so it would be a hot tub. It has the garage wall, this like wooden structure and then a bush, so really just kind of need something in the front. Maybe we don't want people on the rail trail, but it's not very visible.
It's pretty far from the rail trail, so it's not terribly visible. And I think that the other committee looked at it from that, from that advantage of visibility. But they gave us the option to also put a screen in if we like without going back.
Right, but I haven't, I haven't really looked into that, what kind of.
And any questions so far?
It's like, oh, it's gonna, we picked it out to be wooden. Decide to kind of like flow with the rest of like the wooded backyard. Yeah.
Okay, so this is really in the initial stages, nothing really definite at the time beyond the location.
Well, we, we
Well, we, we
We bought it, and then we found out that we had to get all this approval.
Yeah.
So we can't put it in. Or we'll have to sell it if we don't get the approvals, obviously, but
Yeah.
We didn't know, so that's what we did. That's the truth. You know?
Timeout. So have you spoken with Corey? Our building inspector?
Yes, I guess. Early on, I spoke with him on the phone. Yeah.
So what you need to do is you need to speak with him, he's gonna need to come out. He's gonna need to look at, at the site. He's gonna have to give you an indication then of what is going to be required, whether there needs to be a site plan. If it fits within the setbacks between your back lot line and the structure itself. Side as well. He's gonna give you a lot of this information and it's, it's not terribly technical and it's not own for us to provide, but he's gonna tell you exactly what you need to have and what you're gonna need to provide to the board for when you visit us. And that's gonna be really helpful for you to do. And once you have that, then we can, we can do some analysis as you've heard us do with, with other applications and plans. And we can then determine based on, on what you said, what we need to, to ask you to do, whether it's you, whether you may at the worst perhaps need a variance because of the distance or whether you don't need to do anything at all and we just need to set a public hearing and say thank you very much. So he's the fellow that you're gonna have to speak with.
Okay.
And as Alana is not going to be there, you'll need to call the building department, you'll need to speak to Corey Worthman, who is the building inspector, and he's going to give you a full list of details that you're gonna need to have so that you can, you can process this quickly.
Thank you. I have a question. So he said that he would have time to review it for this meeting. Is it safe to, should we just give him more time? I go to before.
I wouldn't, I would, I would call him daily until he calls you back, but then we're going into, to Christmas and then it's gonna be followed by New Year, so to be, to be present of mind for him, I think you're gonna need to stay on him. Zach, you have a comment or a question there?
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I see you included the survey from the previous owners in there and that's, you know, a great starting point for a site plan. We don't require that you have a fully engineered site plan for, for something like this. If you wanted to draw it in yourself to scale, of course, and, and add the appropriate measurements, then that would be perfectly acceptable.
Right.
It's a very good point, very good point.
So we, we talked to Corey, we get our list of what we need to do and then and then do we get back in contact with you to get?
We're gonna go ahead and set you up to be at our next meeting.
Okay.
So that hopefully you will have spoken to him. You've taken Zach's advice and just put the, the two scale measurements of the pad. And that way it'll, it'll already be done. And then submit that plan. But Corey will also check all of the remaining items and tell you whether it's a go or not. This, this should be very easy. We just need to make sure that we get all of the the paperwork and the plans and the permissions all lined up so that it can go smoothly.
Thank you.
For, for the drawing to scale, is it okay if I do it myself as a best guess, given that I'm not an architect or surveyor? Okay. Thank you. Okay, I don't have any further questions. Do you guys have any?
Dennis, do you have any questions or Rachel, do you have any questions? Crickets, okay. So I'm gonna, I believe that they don't. So let's set them up. Let's get a motion to, well, no, actually we need to, we need to actually hear from Corey before we set you up for a public hearing. Although it might not be a bad idea two weeks out, I mean, two meetings out, that would put you on the 18th. Our next meeting is, is gonna be on the 4th, so.
But we could just schedule. Yeah, if you submit the, the site plan for the 4th, then we could just review it at that meeting and set the public hearing.
Yeah, that would put them out to the 4th, that'd put them out 18th, that'd put them out into February. Which really isn't a bad thing. That way we'll make sure everything's complete and that way they could, you could get approval on in February and have it done. Okay, so you're gonna be on a lot of, let's make sure we get them on the meeting scheduled for our next meeting in January, our first meeting in January. And then I'll make a note here to follow up with Corey. Let's see. Okay, so I've got my notes there, so that's kind of where we are on that. Any further questions from us? I think you know what we need, what you need to do.
All good.
Very good, okay. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate you coming here. And we'll look to see you at our next meeting and I will follow up with Corey. Please reach out to him as often as you can. He's gonna be busy over these next several weeks as we go into the holiday season, so there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So that leads us to our next application, which is PB 2120 107 Main Street Lemon Squeeze. Returning application for 107 Main Street, which recently received planning board approval, some modifications being made to the plan. So an amended site plan application must be submitted. Application for a site plan amendment for recently approved bar property consists of approximately, it gives us a description. Makes use building, planning board granted site plan, special use permit approval. Numerous but not substantial site plan changes requested this application as detailed in the letter from the applicant's architect dated 12 1421. We've already typed it as a seeker action. Type two. Not exempt for referral under the agreement with the UCPV since it includes new construction. So Rick, are we gonna have to do a new referral? Is that correct?
Yes.
And do we need to do a new classification as a type two action?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so really our next step, first thing we're gonna do is get a motion to classify this as a type two action.
Some motions.
Second.
We lost Dennis. He texted me and said he lost internet.
Okay, so we need to wait then.
Rachel's here. Rachel, are you there?
Let me just call her really quick, maybe. Alright, so I just, I just made the motion. We need a second.
Yes, and we can't get a second until Dennis comes back.
You can't do anything until you have a quorum.
Yep, you have, have one right now, right, with John?
Rachel's.
Rachel's there. I'm here, I'm here.
Alright.
I'm sorry, I'm on my phone, so I can't see everybody all at once, so I didn't see you, Rachel, sorry.
Okay, no, I'm still here.
Okay.
All good, okay. Let me get down here to alright, so let me back up here, see where I am. So the, we made a motion to classify this as a type two action. We got a motion from Zach. Looking for a second from someone.
I'll second it.
Favor? Aye.
Aye.
So this is now classified as a type two action, a seeker. So the applicants we have here representing the application.
I'm here.
John Bennett and Alan Ross.
Hi, Alan.
Hey, John. Hi, everyone.
So give us an idea of what you guys are trying to do.
So we basically just made some adjustments to the already approved design. I can go through those here. Would you like me to share the drawing and take you through with the drawing or I can just kind of describe it?
Can you hear John well? I'm having a hard time hearing through my, to the can everyone hear you?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll just proceed with the list and then if you have any questions, we can look at it in the drawing if need be. So the front pergola area, the front side of the building on Main Street, we're pulling that back a little bit so that it's actually no longer in the setback zone. We did receive a variance for that from the ZBA. But the revised design now pulls that line back inside the setback or within, beyond the setback. We're also moving the apartment entry from the existing door, sliding it over and raising it up and adding a stoop with a roof over that, a small stoop and small roof over that to enter the apartment. There's a new shed, a small shed roof that's put over the door to the kitchen along that existing east wall to provide some protection there at the door, which currently does not have any. We're bumping out the corner of the building on that east side on the back northeast corner to expand a small bathroom area. It comes out about two and a half feet or so. And we are adding an enclosure on the west side for HVAC shaft. It's coming up from the basement. We're putting an enclosure on the outside of the building that would match the siding of the building to hide that, that duct riser there. Then we are also, we raised the kitchen fans. The kitchen exhaust fans were, they're still in the same location, but they've just been raised up to be a little bit higher way, further away from the parking area. There's a wall, screen wall that now helps suspend them, so the low wall there that they are hung from. Alan took an opportunity to meet with Tom Olson, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, to review these changes and Alan can speak to that.
Yeah, so I met with Tom Olson, you know, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission and reviewed the changes of them. He was, he didn't have objection to any of them and we're planning to present to the commission on January 10th to get everyone's feedback. Generally, you know, Tom and in our previous meeting with the HPC, they were, you know, they were are in favor of what we were doing.
Zach, you or is Rick, is Dennis back? This is back. Any member of the board have any questions or comments on those?
I reviewed the plans. It looks, doesn't look like there's any of the changes would any objections.
Yeah, don't, don't have any questions either.
Rachel, anything from you?
No.
Okay, let's ask our attorney. Any comments you have there, Rick? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Somebody always has to be the one. I didn't hear you make the refer, GMO referral, but I might have missed it.
No, not yet. We're still gonna, that's the next item on me.
That's the only thing I have at this point.
Okay. So moving forward then, what we're gonna do is make a referral, the application of the Ulster County Planning Board. Alana, when can they, when are they next meet?
They should be meeting, it's the first Wednesday of every month. So that would be the fifth, and I should be able to just do that honestly tonight. I was just gonna like do all these public hearing documents and just refer the thing to do it tonight because it shouldn't really take that much time. It's just an email, so I
What a slacker.
I know. Yeah, so I'm just gonna, I think I might just do it all tonight. So yeah, if you guys set the public hearing for the 18th, then they'd be fine too because it would be after the HPC and it would be after the county and they'd probably have a response by then too.
You guys are always like asking about the next step before I get to it. It makes me look like I'm the slacker now. Okay, so let's make that referral of the application to the Ulster County Planning Board, get with the applicant, know when it's gonna be done. The next thing we want to do is we want to schedule a public hearing, so I would like to get a motion to have the public hearing on January 18th.
No motion.
Let me, a second please.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. So you are now scheduled for January 18th. Gonna have a lot of public hearings that, that, that night. So you have discussed about the HPC. Schedule a public hearing, so really there's, there's not much we can do. Corey said he will, he will certainly be willing to meet with you and to go over this. Just simply wasn't able to produce it at this moment. So at this point, we've pretty much gone through, through what, what we can do until this information comes back and until we get a more thorough review from our building inspector. And it's kind of, unfortunately, this is just kind of where we are at the moment.
Thank you. Would you expect those comments from Corey to come in before the 18th then, probably?
They, they will, but, but as I advised, the last applicant, the more frequently you are on either his voicemail or email or in front of him, the more rapidly he will get it done. He's just very, very busy, so unfortunately it's who's in front of him at the moment.
Fair enough.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Ross?
No, thanks very much, guys.
Alright. Alright, we're looking forward to, to having that fully completed and, and, and up and running.
Yeah, we are too.
Indeed.
Zach, you look like you have a question there.
Did we, did we vote on the, on referring it to the?
Actually, we did.
Not yet.
Uh, so, we need to do that, so I need a.
John was holding us in suspense.
Thank you, that's what I was doing, of course. So. Um, I need a motion to refer this to the Ulster County. Planning Board for their first meeting on the first Wednesday of January.
No motion.
All in favor? Excuse me.
A second.
Zach, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So it is, uh, it is now referred, so, uh, thank you for correcting that detail. And it was indeed that I wanted to hold everyone in suspense, so.
And then John, can you guys just approve the December 7th minutes, since Dennis is here?
Ah, yes, thank you. So Dennis, we did look at the meeting, at the meeting minutes from December 7th, you, you were not here. By the way, this is Ben and Mr. Ross, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
Thanks guys, happy holidays.
Thanks very much.
Okay, so let's, uh, finish up with some of the, um, the business, business details. Dennis, we did look at the, the meeting notes from December meeting.
Yes, I did, yes, I did.
Okay, good, so I'd like to get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December.
So motion.
A second please.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I think Rachel is abstaining, I believe.
Yeah, she was not present at the meeting, but we do have one extension. Okay, so the next, uh, agenda is. Alana, have we had any public comments during the meeting?
No.
Okay, so all in favor of closing the public comments?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, so it has passed. Again, so before we leave, just, uh, one, one last opportunity to say thank you, Alana, for. All that you've done for us, and, and we greatly appreciate it, and you will be sorely missed.
You're welcome, I'll miss you guys.
So motion.
Good night.
Night.
Always holiday, everybody.
Hold on, the last thing we need is a motion to adjourn?
So motion.
Second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Halloween.
Merry Christmas, bye guys.
Thank you, happy holidays. Take care, see you next.